...of the Manhattan City Commission to Order, and if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have a special recognition. I'd like to invite Jennifer Hancock, President, Brent Chestnut, Award Chair, with the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers Tri-Valley Chapter, and Commissioner Mike Dodson to join us in front of the Commission Room for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this -- I guess you can hear me? Okay. I'm Jennifer Hancock. I'm the President of the Tri-Valley Chapter of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers. The, yeah, I think the society has, if you haven't heard of us, we've been around for a while. The, our primary mission is to promote the engineering profession, support licensure, and just, in general, make sure that honest, good engineering is happening and has the interest of public safety, health, and welfare in mind. So, um, there's, I think, there's actually quite a few engineers in the room who are members of the society, of the, of the chapter, and there's even more in, in the city of Manhattan and in our chapter region that aren't necessarily members, but we're all here to help. So, if there's any, ever any questions or concerns and you want, you're not sure who to contact, you can get ahold of the society, or you can get ahold of someone in Public Works and they can put you in touch with us. But licensure is, is a big deal to us and we'd like to kind of protect that. The other thing that the society tries to do is give recognition to engineering, is in particular those who support their profession through either the, the work that they're doing or in other ways. And so, to, to kind of give engineering recognition, we've developed this award series. So annually, we like to, to recognize those who have shown support to engineering community and the profession. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brent, President of the Award.
So I'm Brent Chestnut, and I'm the Awards Chair, and this award that we're presenting to Mike Dodson today is the Outstanding Citizen Award, and we would like to recognize him for his continued support and efforts to help out the profession in our society. So, Mike?
Let me just say a couple of words. First of all, I appreciate very much being recognized in this way. This is, this city of Manhattan is very blessed. We've got tremendous consultants and engineers out in our community that build things right. We've got engineers that inspect them. We've got engineers on the city staff that I try to harass as often as I can. Rob and Brian and others, I ask questions mostly because I have an inquisitive nature. When I was a kid, I used to take things apart and put them together. As I got old, I just took them apart and let somebody else put them back together. So, thanks again. This is, this is terrific, and I'm very proud to be an engineer, particularly in this environment here in Manhattan. Thanks.
I'd just like to say that it's a pleasure serving with the Commissioner. That's an outstanding award winner by his professional association, and it's actually refreshing hearing a reference to the good things that licensure can bring, and that's quality. So, it's a good, speaks well of Commissioner Dodson, and all of you actually, because we do have a, a great group here in Manhattan. At this point, I'd like, is, we're going to do a proclamation, and I'd like to invite Mary Stamey, the President of the American Association of University Women, Teresa Landis, Connie Noble, and Commissioner Yasharetti to come forward for the proclamation. I always tell them to keep it short. It's not very short. Come on in, it's a, well, we can just move that out of the way. Whereas women play a vital role in worldwide social, economic, cultural, and political development, and whereas women continue to struggle against discrimination, whether it is a barrier to education, a pay gap at work, higher premiums for health insurance, inadequate options for family leave, or a physical or sexual abuse or violence, and whereas International Women's Day has been observed since the early 1900s, a time of great unrest and critical debate against women concerning oppression and inequality, spurring women to become more vocal and active in campaigning for a change, and whereas March 8th is International Women's Day, a day to celebrate the collective power of women, past, present, and future, and whereas International Women's Day is a day to uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equality, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change, and whereas the city of Manhattan wishes to take this opportunity to celebrate the diversity of people in our city, and to learn from our, from the women of our community about their experiences and aspirations, and to use this day to commit ourselves to respect the rights of women, to lead, lead secure, creative, healthy, and free lives. Now therefore, I, Mayor Morris, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim Thursday, March 8th, as International Women's Day. And it's a pleasure to present this proclamation. I'd like to invite the President or others to make a statement.
Thank you very much. I'm Mary Stamey, and it is my pleasure to help celebrate this. This is our third year to do so. We join many communities throughout the nation and the world to do so. We have a panelist, uh, we have four panelists, uh, joining us Thursday evening at the Vermont, at the Holiday Inn across from the campus, and invite you all to come if you'd like to hear their perspectives of coming to this country as immigrants.
The four panelists that we have are Rebecca Baumann, and she has citizenship in Great Britain and Germany. We have Mary Naganga, who is from Kenya. We have Chi Ahe, who is from Nigeria, and then we have Madai Rivera, who is from Mexico. And the forum that's open to the public begins at 7:00 Thursday night, so we invite you to join us.
I'd like to thank you all for coming and appreciate this opportunity. It's, uh, the American Association of University Women is a unique group that brings a lot of people together here, and they're very forward-thinking. So, thank you for as much as you do here, for all you do here in the community. At this point, I'd like to invite anyone that has a comment, public com, for, for the public comments section of the meeting. It needs to be about a topic that is not on our agenda. If anyone cares to come forward? Okay. Then I'll close the public comments section and move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioners, do you have things you'd like to announce?
Yeah, real quick. Next week, Mayor Morris, myself, along with a couple of staff, have the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. It will just be a great opportunity for us to connect with our federal delegation along with federal agencies, and just synergize with other cities on things that are working for them, things that they've tried in their communities that have been effective. I think last year there was over 2,000 cities that attended, uh, so it's a really great opportunity for us. So, I just wanted to make that known, so if you have any notes that you would like us to carry to DC for you, please reach out to one of us. Thanks.
Okay, on, on Sunday, recent Sunday, I had the opportunity and the pleasure of being one of the three judges for the Seventh Annual Yes for Liberty Constitution Beat that was held over at the Alumni Center. And maybe not everybody's aware of that, but there were 28 finalists from the state of Kansas that competed, and, for scholarships, and the winners, number one student was Anna Surfin from St. Mary's Academy, and she received a $3,500 scholarship. And then the second-place winner was Madison Porter from Shawnee Mission High School, Overland Park, $1,500 scholarship. And third place was Emma Bryan from St. Mary's Academy, also, a $750 award. And so, congratulations to all the award winners who stepped forward to test their knowledge of the Constitution. There were some really tough questions in that particular beat. And I'd like to just solicit people to take a look at the website. It's called Yes for Liberty Organization Scholarship Fund. The "Yes" stands for Youth Education Scholarship, and this entire program for the past seven years has been put on through public donations, and it costs about $15,000 to run the entire program to include the scholarship. So, if you've got an extra $5 burning a hole in your pocket, please go to that website and donate, and it will be greatly appreciated. The other comment is, of course, most of you know, I guess this Saturday is Fake Patty's Day, which is maybe a favorite thing for some people and not favorite for others, and I just want to express in, in, in advance my appreciation for RCPD, EMS, the Manhattan Fire Department, for all the extra work that they're going to put in to ensure public safety. And I think social media and everything's done a pretty good job of putting out that, you know, yep, we're aware that the party's going to take place, we're going to do our best on public safety, but for those that want to imbibe too much, the laws will be enforced in the town. So be aware of that.
A couple of things. So next, next Tuesday, we don't have a meeting, but at this March 10th, not only is Fake Patty's Day going on, but if you're interested, interested in legislative matters, there is a Legislative Coffee at the Sunset Zoo. I believe it starts at 7:30. It's a great opportunity for you to come in, listen to what our legislators are doing, and to peek on what's happening, and if you have any questions, that would be a perfect time for you to also take part in that conversation. The Rainforest exhibit is still going on at the Flint Hills Discovery Center, and also on March 13th, and I, I believe that I'm saying this right, the Youth Economic Commerce Event is going on at Potteroff Hall. I, I believe it's in the morning at 7:00, if you're interested. Is that right, Trent?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, so not 7, but 9. I, I'm hoping I can make it. I have a few other engagements at that time, but if you can swing by there, I think it's great for you to see the youth talent that we have in our community.
Just want to thank the student body out at Kansas State University. On Saturday evening, we had a Relay for Life, which is in support of the American Cancer Society. That went from 6:00 to 12:00, with most of the time spent walking laps in recognition of the relay. Also, Saturday and Sunday, we had a great home show down at the Armory, recognizing a lot of great engineers, a lot of great craftsmen, landscapers, and also businessmen. So hopefully, you got a chance to walk through there and see some of our local business, local and regional business. There's really some great talent, some great new materials and building techniques out there. So, if you didn't get to go this year, put it on your calendar for next year, because it's, uh, it's something that you ought to be proud of.
I'd like to call attention as win to, did, for the Fake Patty's Day. It's a busy time in the community, and especially in the Aggieville area. I just would encourage everyone to be on their good behavior. The police and emergency services will locate in the Weavold Pavilion at City Park as a support center for their needs, and, but, you know, we want to, last year, I think the weather wasn't, was pretty bad, and so the numbers were, were down, so we're anxious to see how things kind of play out this year. And so, and then of course, the following Saturday is St. Patrick's Day, and there'll be a parade in Aggieville, will again be front and center, so it'll be a quick turnaround for, for those businesses and organizations there. Sunset Zoo will have a Community Day on, on March 24th with free admission for children, and, or maybe just free admission, I'm not sure, but anyway, it's a great opportunity to kick off spring, and I hope it's a nice day for everyone, so, I, that's, okay. At this point, we'd like to consider the Consent Agenda, and that is, our items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the General Agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items?
I do not, but is this the time we move the General Agenda item off? It was tabled last time. Is this the time we move it back onto General Agenda? When do we do that? No?
Not, not till we come to it, I think. But it is, I think Jared had a, no, okay, that's on the General Agenda, so, okay.
I just want to comment on Item L after you have public comments.
Sure, okay. Okay. Are there any public comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? None? Seeing none? So we would be, I, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I want to comment on Item L, but, because, you know, th, this item is to authorize an inter-local agreement with Riley County to establish a Food and Farm Council for Riley County and Manhattan. And, and I read through, you know, all the information on it, and personally, I'm really not sold on the mission of that particular organization, and I'm not sure they could accomplish it anyway. It probably fits better under the Health Department. Second thing is, I think that it has a requirement there for the city staff to provide a great deal of administrative support, which is a cost measure, and it's going to take staff time to do that, which means it's going to take that staff time away from everything else, which I think may be a greater priority. So that troubles me a lot. And, third thing is, I think this is going to become another outside agency, and within a couple of years, they'll be here asking for money to fund it, and so, because I'm not sold on the mission, and I don't like the perhaps mission creep that's going to take place here, I can't support that particular measure, so I'll be voting no on that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Is there a motion?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second. City Clerk Gary Fies, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, except Item L.
And Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 with the exception of Item L, which carries 4-1.
Okay. We'll move on to the General Agenda, and that is to consider whether the property, 719 Bluemont Avenue should be declared an unsafe or dangerous structure. And presenting for us will be Brad Kossen, our City Building Official.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. The property that we have before you tonight, again, as you know, is the property at 719 Bluemont Avenue. You'll recall this property from a, a item we had here in January, which I'll go over in just a little bit. The location of the property, I'm sure you're all aware by now, you've maybe been by it. It's directly across from Bluemont Elementary School. You see the school up there in the upper part of the picture. The subject property is in red, highlighted there. So, the structures in the general area are all residential in nature, so it is one of those residential structures in that block. Little background here, the condition of this structure was noted during a routine inspection of some of the exteriors of the properties in the area back in 2016. At that time, our inspection staff wrote up several items that needed to be corrected, and we sent several notices to the owner of that property, which is an out-of-state Those notices were all sent certified. Some of those were claimed by the owner, others were not, others we've received or turned unclaimed, and we've made several attempts to contact the owner by telephone, by mail, and we have not been successful in doing that. At this point, we've observed no corrective activity in the property, which brought us to the point of our January item we had before you, where we filed a report with the governing body outlining the condition of the property. The governing body at that time accepted our report and also approved a resolution which sets tonight as a public hearing to determine whether that property, that structure is unsafe or dangerous. As the state law requires, we mailed that, we published that resolution twice in consecutive weeks, and then again, as required by law, we mailed, certified mail, a copy of that resolution to the property owner, and that letter was claimed on January 26th, so they did receive it. Little bit of info regarding the structure, and I know you heard this the last time I was here, but just to refresh everyone's memory, it's a two-story, single-family wood frame structure. It's a little under 1,400 square feet. It's got a single-car attached garage. It's vacant, and it has been for quite a while, and the utilities have all been disconnected for, some of them for several years, actually, so...
Brad?
Yes.
Before you move on. So when you say they received the letter, does that mean they signed it?
Yes, correct, Commissioner.
So at that time, they did sign it?
They actually, as, as we're required to do, we sent that certified mail, which requires the recipient to sign for the letter, so...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of it. Thanks.
Thank you. So an outline of the procedure for tonight, the public hearing procedure, state law allows the city to undertake this process, and we have done this a number of times in the past when we've had structures that were unsafe or dangerous. You'll hear evidence presented by myself here in just a moment on the condition of the property. Then there would be a chance that the public hearing for anybody associated with the property to present any evidence that they might have. I believe that there may be actually neighboring, at least one or more property owners here also that might want to make some comments as well concerning this structure. When that's all completed, then the governing body, again, is to make findings by resolution as to whether the structure, as to whether you determine the structure to be unsafe or dangerous. If you do find that, then the resolution is to set a deadline for the owner to either repair or remove the structure from the property, and if the owner does not, or fails to do that, then the city at that point may wind up removing the structure from the property.
Real quick, if the city has, ends up being the one that has to remove the, remove the structure, does that have to come before the Commission to approve that cost, or are we approving that cost tonight as well?
No, Commissioner. Your, your action tonight, should you approve the resolution and set that deadline, that's the last time will be before you.
Okay.
So once that deadline occurs, then if it's, if nothing has happened, then city staff will go ahead and institute the process to get it taken down.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if we get to that point, that was a good lead-in to that, Commissioner, if we get to that point, such costs are initially paid through the General Fund, and that's actually a statutory requirement, state law requires those costs to be paid through the General Fund. We would send a statement to the owner of the property with those costs that we incurred to remove that structure. They have 30 days to pay those costs, and if they don't pay them, the costs are attached to the property as a special assessment and collected through the property tax mechanism. I added this last bullet. I know there were some questions at the January meeting we had as to whether the city somehow winds up owning this property at some point, and we do not. The city, the property remains in private ownership throughout this process. Through, through the end of the process, when the structure is gone, the lot still remains in the ownership of the private individual that, that owns it. So the city, city will not have any kind of ownership in that property.
Brad, could you, are the property taxes, have they been paid on the property?
I, I checked that, Mayor, actually this morning. I've kind of been watching that a little bit, and as of this morning, they have not paid the first half taxes, which were due in December, I know. But previous taxes have been paid, so up, up to the point of the taxes that are currently overdue...
Good. So they're not three or four years behind?
No.
They're pretty, pretty current. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, within the last year.
Yeah.
So, okay, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go through some slides here and kind of go through what the, yes, Mayor?
Let me just say that I think, at this point, I need to just declare that this is the public hearing for the purposes of you providing the evidence, so I'll do that.
Certainly. Very good.
It's begun.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So I'm going to go through some slides here just to kind of highlight what the problems, some of the problems are with the building and our concerns with this structure. I've kind of categorized those loosely into some general issues here. The structure has some obvious foundation issues. There's deterioration of the structure itself, the attached garage. Harborage conditions would be conditions that would harbor animals, wildlife, vermin, pests, any of that kind of thing. An attractive nuisance, those conditions, most specifically, especially in this case, because we're directly across the street from an elementary school, would be conditions in a structure that might attract children to want to enter the structure or play in, in and around the structure. Could also be vagrants or things, people who really shouldn't be in the property or on it. And then last thing would be the, some of the fire hazards that we're concerned with, with this structure being vacant and unmaintained as it is. This is the structure we're talking about. This is the front of the structure, actually the Bluemont side, as we're looking at it from the Bluemont public sidewalk. The left-hand side of the house there would be east, the right-hand side would be west, so when I refer here in a couple of slides to an east or a west foundation side, you can kind of orient yourself. So I'll hit the foundation items first here. You see in this slide, this is the east foundation wall of the house. There's probably a little clearer picture of it right here, but you see on this side, you see the, the movement evident in the foundation of the structure. At some point, someone has come in here and attempted to repair some of this with some concrete block. This structure originally, and most of the foundation is stone, as you can see from a lot of the pictures, but there's a, there's a short section of concrete block in here where I would make the assumption that someone has come in and tried to repair some damage or, or something with this block. This block, though, is starting to move as well. You can see evidence of that in this picture. This picture, you actually see some of the siding of the house starting to, to bow already with the movement of the foundation. This is the west side of the house. And now, this side is all stone on this side, but as you can see, there's been movement in this side as well. This is a little closer view of a section of this foundation, and again, you can see in the upper part of that picture, you can see the, the actual siding and the wall of the house starting to move along with the foundation of that structure. This is a cover over an opening into the basement on the west side. You'll see how the, the foundation has moved relative to that, to that cover. You can see the opening in there, the deterioration of that. All places, as we continue, you know, when it rains, when it snows, water runs in through all those locations, we get freeze-thaws, and it continues the deterioration of the structure. This is the front, front right corner, I'll call it, of the house. You see the stones separating there and the deterioration there. This is the front-left corner of the house, same thing here. You see the snow sitting on top of that stone. When that melts, it's either going to run down in that stone and freeze and thaw and cause further damage, or it's going to run in under the sill plate of that house and cause that wall to rot. So, as you can tell, there's really foundation issues throughout the perimeter of this house. The garage of the house, which is in, on the west side, and the opening is in the back of the property, you see on the picture here, you see a rotted section of the wall on this garage. The garage door is open about a fourth of the way, and actually, I'm not sure it would close. I think it's actually broken. You can see the garage door is, is not square with the top of the garage, and actually, the left side of the the left side of the garage frame is broken. Here's a closer picture of that. You can see part of that garage frame broken and hanging out under that garage door. Rear porch of the house has obviously not been maintained for a long enough period of time to cause trees to start growing up through the porch of the structure. They are getting bigger by the, by the year, and this is a little closer version of, or picture of that back porch. Again, you see the, the vegetation growing, the trees growing up through that porch. You can see in the floor of the porch right there, besides all the debris and, and the trash bag, you see the floor of the porch actually has rotted floorboards. It is definitely not safe to, to try and walk on this porch. There's actually holes all the way through the porch. Had I been a little quicker with my camera a few weeks ago when I was taking updated pictures of this structure, I actually saw, I'm not sure what it was, but there was an animal of some sort that was crawling down through that hole under the porch right there, which is, I'm sure, creating a perfect location for that type of wildlife. I used the same picture again to illustrate a different point here. I'm gonna get into the attractive nuisance and harborage concerns now. You see in there, again, back porch, you see the porch, which I just talked about, creates a, a location for wildlife to, to live. The back door is open right here. It's hard to see with the shadow, but in the middle of that picture, there's a door right there, and that door is open. A little wider view of the back of the structure, you can just kind of see the general overall condition of it from here. Here is a second back door into the structure. You see the broken glass in the door. Now, I don't know if that was caused by vandals or what, but nevertheless, we've got fairly easy entry point for anybody that might want to get in or out of the building through this broken glass in this door. Front of the house, this is on the front, this is a broken window on the front of the structure. All areas where you're gonna get birds, vermin, wildlife of any kind that might inhabit this This is the basement opening on the, I showed you this picture earlier with respect to the foundation, but you can see that foundation picture I took was taken actually several months ago, and you see since that time, that basement opening cover has now fallen into the hole, into the basement. So, you know, over the months, we've continued to see deterioration of this particular structure. This is the front of the structure. I threw this one in there again because of the attractive nuisance conditions. It's hard, a little hard to tell, but the window to the right of the front door is open, and it has been. The storm window's in place, but the window itself, the interior window, is open. And this is a picture looking directly across the street at Blument Elementary School, and, and I put this one in to illustrate our concern again, and I don't think I can probably highlight it enough times, our concern with the children in the neighborhood, especially in having a structure like this in proximity of something like that. And finally, I'm gonna hit on some fire hazards. In vacant structures in general, you can apply, you know, this is a vacant structure, it's an unmaintained vacant structure. So, over a two-year span here, a few years ago, the U.S. Fire Administration did a study on fires in vacant buildings. And what they found, over that two-year span of time, they had almost 24,000 fires in vacant structures nationally that were reported. You see the fire loss there, not inconsequential. There was loss of life, there was injuries, there was a lot of property damage. In those vacant structure fires, those almost 24,000 fires, non-confined fires accounted for 99% of those fires. And of those, a third of those were intentionally set fires. So again, illustrating the point that these type of structures can lead to that type of activity. Of those vacant building fires, over half of those spread to involve the entire structure. Generally, the reason that would be, would be there's nobody there to report that fire, and, so usually, fires in vacant buildings have a longer time to, to get started and to involve the structure before someone reports those. And because of that, because of the extent of some of those fires, 10% of the structure fires in the, in the report spread to adjacent properties. So another concern. And then the final point there is that, you know, a major concern in these vacant, and especially vacant and unmaintained structures, is that you never know what the structural interior condition of those structures are. So when you have firefighters that might be entering that structure, it puts them at a greater risk as well because of some of those unknown structural conditions. Then finally, our recommended action tonight, we recommend approval of the resolution which would declare the property at 719 Blument a dangerous or unsafe building, and set a deadline for repair or removal of that structure. I would point out that in the resolution that, that you have, we have inserted a date of April 20th. There's nothing magical about that date. It's a date a little more than a month away, which gives time for the resolution to be mailed to the owner, and it gives them about a month to, to do something with the property. So you are certainly, if you do decide to approve the resolution, you can use that date that we've suggested, or you're certainly free to choose any other date that you feel is appropriate to have this taken care of. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions? Please, go ahead.
How many total notices did we send? I'm counting 13, is that correct?
Yeah, that's probably, I think that's about right, Commissioner. We've sent several notices with respect to the condition of the structure, notices and letters. When we got no response initially from some of our notices, we actually just sent letters trying to urge the owner to just contact us to discuss a plan of action for the building. Several of the notices we sent also were peripheral to the structure. They were weed notices, trash, things like that. We've had to mow the property several times.
And the first one we have is around June 2016, is probably accurate?
That was the one that initiated or precipitated this particular action. We can actually go back in our database, and, and we've got close to 40 letters, we've sent this property over the year on various property maintenance issues. So it has been a, an issue for quite a while, actually, that it hasn't been maintained. But since it's been vacant, and the utilities disconnected, and nobody's been doing anything with it, it has really, the deterioration and, and the, it has accelerated rapidly since, in the last couple of years, so...
I just want to make sure that we illustrate in a very public way how long we have been working through this, and how many notices we've sent.
Very much. We would love to have worked with the owner to try and get something done here, but, you know, nevertheless, we're at the point we are because we do need to get something done with it, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm comfortable moving forward with the resolution because they signed the letter, so at least somebody received something to this. And being so close to the school is just very dangerous, regardless whether of anything else that's there or not. So I think it's, you've been very patient with them.
At this point, we should also, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
I think we have your presentation. Is there anyone here from the public? Let me open the public comments period or public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak with regard to this issue?
I'm Phil Anderson. I live at 1719 Fairchild Avenue, and I own the rental property at 725 Blument immediately to the west. I've owned that for 20-plus years, and that 719 property has never been maintained up to the standards that it should be maintained as a rental. It was, I think it's been probably at least three or four years since anybody has lived there, and the people who were living there even three or four years ago, I'm not even sure they had a lease, because they kind of came and went. At one point, I, I called Brad's office and said the weeds in the back were over six feet tall, and that needed to be taken care of. Now, that, that structure being next to my rental property, of course, does not enhance the value of my rental property, and that's a problem. In neighborhoods, when we allow over a period of time that we, that, that the city does not exercise a certain amount of oversight in attempting to not allow this to happen to this extent. My tenants have told me that they have seen animals go in and out, especially at night. Usually, these kinds of animals are, are active at night, probably raccoons, I would guess, and probably squirrels and whatever else is in there. My biggest concern is that that property next to 725 is close enough. If it did catch fire, I'm sure it would severely damage my property as well. And, and I worry about that, and as Brad said, it's close to the Blument school, although I must say I've never seen anybody on that property except tenants. The other thing, if you know, I'm really, I'm leading up to, I will be very happy to see this property raised and that lot fixed up. Having said that, if you look at that picture from the Blument side of that structure, when that was built in the 1920s, I thought somebody said 1924, but I'm not sure, that was an attractive structure. Architecturally, that was a very nice, middle-class property. It had a limestone basement. It could have been built by Henry Winter. It's, the basement, that limestone basement is kind of his style, although I, I'm not sure he worked a whole lot in that particular area. The house itself had integrity. The neighborhood had integrity. And I think as a city, as a community, I think it's important that we exercise whatever it takes to attempt to maintain and to regulate in some way so that we're not faced with these very nice houses having the lifeblood sucked out of them, and they're now, it's, it's worth less than the value of a lot, because it's gonna cost a lot of money just to raise that property. I've been on this for 30 years, you know what I'm getting at, so I don't need to say it, but I do think that as a community, we can do better, especially in these older neighborhoods, attempting to protect the integrity of these homes. This was a very nice house when it was built, and a lot of them on that street were very nice houses. And if you get down to the 500 block, there were some excellent houses there, owned by architecture faculty early in the 20th century, architecture faculty from Kansas State University. So anyway, I agree with Brad that the house needs to be taken down.
Phil, because you've been paying attention, how long has it been since someone lived in this house that we're considering?
How long since somebody's been occupying the house?
Yeah, since it's been occupied.
I think it's been at least five years, but it's always been a problem.
Okay.
I mean, you could watch it.
No, that's okay.
To deteriorate.
Uh-huh. Okay.
At the same time, I, if you go by 725 Blument, we've tried very hard to keep that property up. In fact, when we bought it, we put a whole new foundation under it.
Thank you.
At great expense, and, and remodeled the whole thing, and we try to keep it looking nice. So it will look a whole lot better when this house, 719, disappears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want, I, I need to ask if there is anyone here either representing the property owner or a lien holder? Is there anyone here to speak? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone else, else wish to speak to this proposal, to demolish this building? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and ask if there is further discussion or comments from the commission? Okay. Is there a motion?
I just wanted to say one thing. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, but, but I guess the final process on this, you know, if the city ends up demolishing the building, we'll get the cost of that, then that goes on the property tax thing. And, and eventually, I guess, if the, the owner would end up paying for it, then if he pays the property tax. If not, then eventually this thing will come up for taxation, and, and that's how we'll recoup the money. So the city isn't gonna lose anything on this.
Well, and the owner's been paying the taxes up until this last time, so... But I do think that the safety issue has to be addressed, and I appreciate that the commission is, is willing to take those steps. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 030618-B, finding the structure at 719 Blument Avenue, unsafe or dangerous, and setting a timeframe of April 20th, 2018, for repair or removal.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, Item B, is to consider the first reading of an ordinance amending a prior ordinance and a final development plan of Lot 1 Downtown Entertainment District, planned unit development to allow for a parking lot at the northeast corner of Fourth Street and Colorado Street for an unspecified temporary amount of time. And the presenter is Linda? No, Carol?
Davidson.
Davidson?
Yes.
From the Community Development Department?
Yes.
Mayor Morris, real quick, I'm gonna recuse myself on this topic. I don't have a legal conflict of interest, but since the applicant is my employer, it is probably the best thing for me to step out, so I'm...
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, my name is Carol Davidson, Senior Planner here with the city, and I'd like to present this case. This is a PUD amendment to the Downtown Entertainment District PUD. This is being represented by the owner, CP Building LLC. The location is the northeast corner of Fourth Street and Colorado Street. It is vacant right now, but this is the subject site. When the original PUD was put together, this is what was planned to be on this lot, a three-story mixed-use building with commercial on the bottom floor and residential on the top two floors. However, this has not come to fruition, and the lot is still vacant. And so the owner would like to put in a parking lot at this location. It's a 25-stall parking lot, and this, I do want to mention, is a temporary parking lot in that the owner is still marketing this property to be developed as it was originally proposed, but until he finds a suitable partner to join up with him to build on this lot, he would like to put in this parking lot. The parking lot will have access off of Colorado and Pierre. There will be no curb cuts. These, the access will be through access easements, and the hotel there on the east will get five or six new parking spaces as well through this proposal. This was held, or the planning board heard this case on February 19th, and they had a unanimous vote to recommend approval of this amendment, and staff as well recommends approval of this amendment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
When, when you said temporary, what do you mean by, what, what materials are gonna make up the parking?
It will be, there are three conditions of approval, and one of them is that it needs to meet the standards in our zoning and subdivision regulations. So it, it basically will be a permanent parking lot as we see any other parking lot. They will need to landscape, they will need to have a landscape agreement, but if, if two years down the road, a suitable buyer is coming in and wants to develop on that property, they will repurpose the parking lot.
So it'll have hard service and drainage?
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's, there's a drainage plan, there's a lighting plan, there's a landscaping plan. It's a complete, what we would call a permanent parking lot.
Thank you.
I think this is two local business owners, let's say, two very committed toward the community, working well together, I think with Civic Plus, and having McCullough Development as far as getting a parking lot, whether it's temporary or not, that wasn't originally the thought behind it.
Yes.
But it's good to have that option, and I'm glad that's happening.
Yes.
Because there is a need. It also shows that there's growth going on in that area where you need more spaces. And Civic Plus is doing well, and they've been very prominent as far as our downtown economic development, as well as...
economic development, as well as the whole of Manhattan, the city of Manhattan. And anytime, I'm glad the proposal is still out there, that if they see a change and they want to revisit and do something different there, that the option is still there. So I don't see any, any red flags in the proposal, let's say.
Carol, I did have a question.
Yes.
In the planning board minutes, there was a mention of an easement and some park, a couple of parking places for the hotel.
Yes. Sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can't hear you.
We'll just wait a minute.
Okay.
It doesn't take very long.
Okay.
Okay. There was a mention of easement and access and a couple of parking places that are more to be used by the hotel next door, and the map is gone, so.
Yeah, yeah. There, there is an existing easement on the, the property that's to the north.
Okay.
The hotel, the Fairfield Inn, they will be getting an access easement with Fairfield Inn to be able to access that part of the property.
Okay.
And, and Fairfield Inn is the one that's going to be getting those five parking spots, five or six that are on the outside of that parking lot.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions? All right. At this point, I'd like to open the public comment portion of the meeting. Would someone like, anyone would like to come forward? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jessica Shaver. I'm with McCullough Development.
Okay.
I'm an Assistant Asset Manager with McCullough Development, and McCullough Development originally applied for this PUD amendment on behalf of the owner of the subject property, the CP Building LLC, as Carol was mentioning. That group of owners also owns a Civic Plus building across the street. The primary goal of this PUD amendment was to meet the additional parking needs of the Civic Plus building. There's currently a vacant commercial space in the south portion of the Civic Plus building that has been vacant for the duration of the building's life, which has been about three and a half years. The main concern of prospective tenants that are touring that space is the lack of dedicated parking for that space. So we feel that the strategically placed lot will aid in getting a tenant secured in that commercial space, as well as meet some additional needs of the Civic Plus building's tenants currently. Like I was saying, the, the current tenants, customers and employees, this will be a dedicated lot for them. And although it's dedicated to them, it will free up 25 parking spaces for the public at no additional cost to the city. The owners of that lot would love nothing more than to develop it as the PUD calls for right now. However, with the softening commercial and residential market in Manhattan, the owners don't really feel it's safe to speculate on that ground unless they have a long-term lease in place or a partner that'd be willing to take over the first floor, similar to the Civic Plus building. If the PUD amendment is passed and the lot is developed, the owners would certainly be willing to repurpose this lot as the PUD calls for right now, if that long-term lease or partner would become available. So on behalf of the owners of the Civic Plus building, I would respectfully ask for your support of this amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can, and also Mark Bachamp with Olson and Associates is here. He's our engineer for the project, and he can answer any technical questions that anyone may have. Can I answer any questions?
I don't think.
Thank you.
Evidently not.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this proposal? Seeing none, I will close the public comments portion and ask the commission to discuss or ask questions. Please, you're welcome to.
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 6804 and the final development plan of Lot 1 Downtown Entertainment District Planned Unit Development, generally located on northeast corner of Colorado Street and South Fort Street, based on the findings in the staff report with three conditions of approval and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider a real estate contract in, in the amount of $800,000 for the transfer of city, of city, a city parking lot located at 12th Okay, the first thing we need to do is remove this from the table. Is there a motion to do that? I move we remove it from the table.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
And so, Jason Hilders, Deputy City Manager, will be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Soon as our cameras warm up, you'll see a presentation, but I'll go ahead and start moving through it. We were in front of the commission a couple times here in the last few months, December 12th and February 6th. You tabled the item on, on the 6th to really focus on three pieces of the real estate contract, the elimination of IRBs. Wanted us to look at our contingencies and the ability for the developer to waive those and then address parking during the day. Just a reminder, proposal is for the Johnson Company to purchase 15,000 square foot lot in a 1,200 block of Blumont. They own the lot directly to the east of former Carwash, and they delayed a project on that corner to see if this would materialize. An overview, just aerial of the area, Starbucks is the property in the middle there to the left, our parking lot in the middle to the right, and then the adjacent owner, the Johnson Company owns the lot there to the east. Agreeable, Johnson Company has proposed to purchase the lot for $800,000, contingent on zoning. We did eliminate the IRBs. The developer can't waive those zoning and permitting pieces. They can, they've also worked in the agreement with the hotel company for those, in the cooperation section, for the non-peak times to be free for those businesses and users in the Aggieville area. Just to reiterate the financial impact that we talked about previously, the $800,000 for the purchase is obviously a key piece. The value of the property after the development for the next 20 years has really been the focus as we talk about TIF and as we talk about all the public infrastructure and needs and wants that are in Aggieville. That value is more important, quite honestly, in my opinion, than the acquisition price. That value is what sets the stage for the use of that tool in that district for the next 20 years. We anticipate the incremental increase per year for the next 20 at just over a quarter million dollars, which would generate $5 million in incremental revenue just from the hotel and TIF funds. It's a type of project that is referred to as a catalyst that will allow us to move forward with the TIF district process and those revenues being dedicated towards that list of public infrastructure on the screen, including parking garage and all the amenities that we've talked about throughout the Aggieville community vision. So future steps for Aggieville, talked a little bit about this with Walker Parking Consultants, parking management plan, looking at structures to bring all those stalls and that inventory into one structure, the streetscape, landscape, lighting, all those public amenities in and throughout the district, the traffic flow, the on-street parking discussion, and just the pedestrian movements throughout Aggieville. Those topics are going to require a lot of energy. There's going to be a lot of debate. Consensus will be a tough thing to gain, but that is where our goal will be, is try to gain some consensus, try to continue our steering committee's input and feedback, providing you all recommendations on how to move forward. TIF is the tool we've been talking about that will allow us to fund the studies and the infrastructure to move forward. It obviously, the district has a value today, and it's anticipated that value will increase. It allows us to capture that over time and dedicate those revenues right back to that Just to reiterate, the Aggieville district today roughly worth about 66 million. That increase is almost three times in the last 20 years at a 6.4 annual growth rate. If it grew at 4% over the next 20, we would reach 145 million. That incremental increase on an annual basis by way of property taxes would be nearly $19 million. So the pros and the cons, I had this up at the last meeting. Obviously, I've eliminated some of the cons in terms of incentives that we took out of the agreement. Most of the pros basically stay the same. The other cons of, some of those contingencies have obviously been taken out, too. So if we decide to move forward, we'll obviously start a TIF discussion and look at a boundary and a lot of the process specifics. We'll have those discussions and ultimately approach both USD and Riley County after this governing body takes action to move that forward. The Johnson Group, the Johnson Company and McNeil Hotel Group would pursue zoning, roughly take a time period of four months. If they're ready and their consultants are ready to start submitting those documents, we can move that forward. Aggieville, I know I've had a conversation with Aggieville, and I believe they're here this evening to make some comments about parking management. The loss of 42 stalls, I think they have a strategy to address stalls today that are not being regulated, that people can park in all day and not move their car. And I think that total is in excess of 42 stalls within the district itself. Laramie Street, portions of 12th, North Manhattan, South Manha, I'm sorry, South Manhattan. No, it'd be North Manhattan, it's North Point. And then the areas along Fremont and City Park are worth discussion as well. Some of our parking stalls and our, on, off-street parking lots are three-hour, and we can move those to two-hour. Downtown, everything's two-hour. It was adjusted to three-hour some years ago in Aggieville, and you can move that down to two. That would turn over stalls more frequently as well. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, but from the, from the tabled item, the three things that we were charged to work with the developer, I feel like we've reached those, but if there's other questions or concerns, happy to take a stab.
Just one quick question. When was our first public work session regarding this? I know I wasn't on the commission yet, so.
So we had December, as I mentioned. We talked about the concept in October of '16.
Okay.
That's when the McNeil Group approached the city about doing something. And then we were right in the middle of the Aggieville Community Vision update. That's where our commissioners at that time provided feedback that we needed to finish that study so we could determine, based on the results of that, just that corridor of Blumont, how that would look and feel.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one, one question, Jason. At the last meeting, there were some individuals, you know, expressed a desire to put forth some alternate proposals. Did anyone contact the city with any ideas since the last meeting?
They did not contact the city manager's office. I do believe an email was sent today to the governing body, or some members of the governing body. I think the mayor received something this afternoon, so.
I didn't, I don't recall seeing that today.
Okay.
It's hard to know who receives what if you're, whether you're the only person.
Right.
I think I, well, you're the only person, or it's hard to tell.
So I think they did have a proposal when, and I'm assuming they're going to be here this evening to talk about that proposal.
That would be good, rather than me having to try to summon it up. All right, I appreciated the, the question I had was when you would plan to initiate the, the tax increment financing, and you covered that, so.
Yeah.
All right, are there other questions from the commission? Okay.
Comments?
No, I'm going to ask for public comment, and after public comment, then Commissioner comments.
Eric Gonchar and Mike Johnson with the Johnson Company are here this evening as well. They may have some comments for you.
All right. Would the developer care to come forward and speak to the issue?
Good evening. My name's Eric Gonchar. I'm here on behalf of the development group, and we're excited to say that we were able to kind of regroup and work on our development plan and come back before you with meeting the, the three stipulations that you had set forth during the last meeting. We continue to be extremely excited about this project. As Jason mentioned, I think it'll be a catalyst for future development. I think it'll have a significant positive impact on the community. We've continued to receive wide community support, really from all stakeholders, property owners, business owners. Folks in the Aggieville district are extremely excited about this. I think it's going to solve in the long term a major parking issue or contribute to the solution of that parking issue. And obviously, there's great benefit with the, with the increase of the tax base. So we're excited about the project, and we appreciate the consideration.
How do you plan to manage the park, the public parking in the garage that you proposed?
So really, what, as the agreement is set forth is, you know, clearly, we're here to be good members of the community, and so what we've agreed to is at non-peak times, we'll provide free access to the community. The details of that still need to be kind of ironed out, but we know there's not going to be a charge, and we know that there will be some times when, you know, it's going to be 100% capacity. We won't be able to offer that. At the times when it's not, we will be able to offer that.
And do you have success working with that, those parameters at another facility?
Our partners, the McNeil Group, do, and we could get greater detail from them for you on that, but yes, they have done this at, at other facilities. They, they've developed hotel projects throughout the country and have a major focus on college markets, so this, this is right in line with their historical development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to the proposal from the community or otherwise?
Linda, did you want to talk about the parking offset a little bit?
Good evening, Linda Mays, Aggieville Business Association. Last week, we sat with Jason for a little while. We had put together our own parking committee and, with the ABA, and kind of looking at this strategy, we noticed that there's a lack of consistency throughout Aggieville. It's been that way for a while. So our first step would be to make everything consistent. Everything should go to two-hour parking, and that way we can get turnover within the district. There's a lot of free parking that's kind of just open right now. We'd like to close that down just a little bit and do two-hour parking from eight to five. And then we also had a very good, very good conversation with Manhattan Christian College as well, and kind of looked at their strategy of their orange zone and had a conversation of taking 14th over there and making that a zoned area as well, because it's currently all-day free parking as well. So kind of just going all the way, not just inside of Aggieville, but going around the outside of Aggieville and really kind of making that consistent. Of course, it's going to take further talks with, with Jason and kind of putting together, putting that together, but we do plan on putting something, a recommendation here in the next few weeks. When looking at the district in itself, we did come up with quite a few extra spaces that could be. that could be involved in this, and so it does open up the district a lot more. And with the help of some of the parking from the hotel being free as well, I think that it's going to be a great temporary fix that's going to be conducive for everybody. So we still stand united behind this in support of the hotel going in, and we are really hoping that you guys will all move forward with this this evening, simply because, right, this is it for Aggieville. This is what we need, and we're asking you to become part of this and pushing us forward for our future. Aggieville deserves to be looked at as a future, you know, district that is a prominent place for people to visit, and we cannot do that without some kind of growth and stimulation, and that's kind of what's before you tonight. So with that, do you have any questions? I know it was kind of a very random strategy that we haven't put all of our recommendations together, but if there's not any question, that's what we've got.
Basically, you would return after you've had a chance to work with the city administration about a parking plan?
Yes, ma'am.
An alternative parking plan?
Yes, Mayor, they've asked us to put something together.
At another time, not now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be short. I've been up here before, and I think we've all heard all this stuff before, but I definitely wanted to...
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason Grantham, 1212 Blumenton.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to cover a couple items. Again, I know you guys got a letter from my partner on the RFP proposal and the lack of open competitiveness on this whole process. It's been mentioned and glossed over, and obviously, it's okay with the city that we're going to move forward with no open competition or seeing what other options are out there. Unfortunate, disappointing, but apparently, everybody's bought off on it. I just want to make sure that that's on the record. I would also like to reiterate that we are also selling this property at the rock-bottom price, $800,000. Jason mentioned it. We've talked about the appraisals. We're also giving this company a nine-month option on this property for $300. So they're tying up this city property for $300 to see if they can get through the zoning process and all the other loosens they need to tie up. For some reason, this wasn't to work, they're walking away $300 out of their pocket, and who knows how much city time and effort and dollars have gone into that process. So I would like the council to consider all these items before we just rubber stamp this and move on down the road.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Jason? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment period, and the commission can have a discussion or individual commissioners can let us know what their thinking is.
I still don't fully understand what alternate RFP proposal was put out. Can somebody clarify that?
There hasn't been a full RFP because there have not been an opportunity. Do you want to talk about what... No. Not detailed, no.
Okay, so basically, what I'm asking for, I mean, you know, that last meeting, people said they needed 30 days to put forth at least an alternate proposal, maybe not a formal RFP. Did anything of value come of that?
So there was an email that I saw late this afternoon that I think was sent to the city commission on your website addresses. I don't know that for sure. The mayor forwarded one that she received to me that had a basic outline of proposed improvements, made a dollar offer, but, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to represent that in this meeting.
Okay, because I may have gotten an email, but I didn't look at it after 3 o'clock, so if it came that late, you know, I just haven't, I just haven't looked at it. And that seems to be a day late and a dollar short. I mean, you know, because we were asked to give them 30 days to come forth with something, you know, viable, and so in my opinion, well, if it gets here at 3 o'clock today, that doesn't meet the bill that I was looking for.
I think the message that Mr. Grantham delivered was really, the impetus was to go out for an RFP. I mean, he had a concept, but his main point was go out and take proposals formally, which I think is what Mr. Grantham represented here this evening, too.
And that's different. I was hoping, you know, that they could put forth something that we could maybe consider, but if that's not there, it's not there.
I have a few comments. So we've been working on this since 2016. And the first time it came out because parking again at that time, and the second time also was because of parking and IRBs and the lot itself and a variety of other reasons. And I appreciate the patience from McNeil Hotel Group to continue to work with us on this. I think the flexible parking is key, as we talk about until Aggieville gets its own garage. But again, parking alone is not going to solve all of Aggieville's problems. That's a small component of it. The other reason was the IRBs, and I'm glad you stepped up and removed that. The reason that was a big issue for me at that time is because we do a lot for our locals as far as IRBs, and I don't mind doing that because we want to keep them here, and we've been doing so many of them, I don't want people to think that any corporation can come in and request IRBs, because ultimately, our taxpayers that are committed to living in our community for decades end up picking up the tab, whether the business is successful or not. So that was another issue for me, and I'm glad you came forward and decided to remove that issue also, and then working on the zoning part. Again, the $800 that we're talking about for the parking lot is going to be just a small piece of the $12 million that we're talking about for the garage. And when we're talking about a TIF district, that again, doesn't solve all the problems. It is a step in the right direction, but we have to see what other types of businesses want to move into Aggieville. And we're hoping that something, like if a Marriott is there, that might give some leverage for other businesses to want to move into Aggieville and make it not just a bar scene of sorts, but more of an entertainment district like downtown has. So there are many reasons we would want something like this there, but it doesn't fix all the problems. I think we still have to work very closely with the university and other businesses within Kansas, not just Manhattan, to make Manhattan a very pleasant place to live. I used to be okay with people saying, "Oh, I didn't want to move there, but once I got there, it was fine." I really wanted to be, I've always wanted to be in Manhattan, and I'm finally here. So I want us to get to that, and I want us to make sure that we're doing it all for the right reasons. And I wish it a lot of success, and we're going to do everything we can because it is in the best interest of Manhattan. But we have to work on this together. A parking garage is not going to fix, is not the solution for all the problems, and having just a Marriott there is not the solution. You need to aggressively seek other businesses to move to Aggieville, and it can't just be other bars. It might be retail, it might be artists, it might be a music thing. I don't know what that looks like. You're the experts. But if you come up with those plans, we will definitely work with you on this. The proposed plan that's in front of us, I'm okay with the changes that have been made, and I'm grateful for our city staff and everybody that worked on it, very arduous and the tenacity behind it. So thank you.
Yeah, just, I made a list of things that I want to cover real quick, because this has been an issue that we've talked a lot about. First, when the proposal was first made to us, my main concern was also about the IRBs, because I thought it violated a just basic sense of fairness, because it in some ways violated our own city policy concerning IRBs. With that being said, I think we, as a commission, agree that IRBs are an important economic development incentive that we can use in the future. So that's a policy that we, as a group, are going to relook at to see if we can make those standards more clear moving forward. So I appreciate you working with us to remove those. The other concern that some people have brought up to me is just competition in the market. I've had some hotel owners and private citizens reach out to me and say, you know, "This is a very competitive market. We're overbuilt in the space." And I just want to make it very clear that I don't think it's the city commission's place to decide how much competition in this market that the city can handle. The market will decide that. So that has never really weighed into my decision to begin with, especially since the city's not offering any sort of tax incentives. This is a, you know, private development. Concerning the sale of a lot of the land and not going out for proposal, I kind of, I mean, it should just be a basic thought that if the city owns a lot of land, that you have a lot of land, a lot, not a lot, a lot. I was getting that mixed up in my head. If we own land and you have an innovative idea for something that you want to do, the city's probably going to do business with you. And I kind of reject the notion that, you know, if you've had this innovative idea in your head, that you didn't know the city was willing to do business before this proposal happened, because there have been other instances where we've worked with private developers to sell city land in the benefit of the city. So just know, if the city owns something and you think something innovative can be done there, please, tell us. But regarding that, this has been, this specific issue, we've talked about for some time. I think that we've allowed plenty of time for proposals and alternative ideas, and as of today, we haven't seen anything sufficient of this level. And just to go on to the benefits of it, it's absolutely a catalyst for the TIF district. It's absolutely something that we need to stimulate growth at Aggieville. So with the removal of the IRBs and some leniency in the parking, why we get the parking garage structure figured out, I'm fully comfortable with moving forward with this proposal.
You know, again, I would have liked to have had, you know, some other choices. You know, it would have been nice, but as I think back with the city's track record, especially talking to hoteliers, I mean, if you look down at Blue Earth Plaza, we did essentially the same thing. And we had two hotels appear, and we had the same argument. And so I was sort of with Jared on that, as far as, I just, you know, don't see that as the issue. And I also think that, you know, looking at the data the staff provided, the inventory of hotel rooms has gone down significantly, and when these get added, we won't be back where we were three years ago. And so the competitive thing may not be, you know, quite as profound as everybody says, and you know, and I'm a capitalist at heart, and so I believe in competition and, you know, entrepreneurs and do what you can do. And the things that I was concerned about, the city staff addressed, you know, the IRB thing, we've got an interval parking plan, and we've got some seed money to do the long-range thing, and this was all about parking to begin with. And I'm not sure that more retail space will make any difference there. We've got a lot of vacant retail space. So, you know, based on what I see, you know, has come out, and we had a month to relook it, I guess I'm in favor of it, because I don't have any really good reason to vote against it.
Now, I'd just say, this is a, some years ago, when we started on the downtown, we put a lot of energy and a lot of both personal and financial capital into that development. It's now time to look towards Aggieville. It's got a tremendous potential with its connection to Kansas State University right across the street. It's got great potential for entrepreneurial development, and when we looked at the Aggieville plan with the streetscape, you can't help but get excited about that. I mean, this makes it really look like a great place to be and a great place to put a business and a great place to visit. So I appreciate the hard work of Johnson and McNeil here to put all this together and the support of the Aggieville Business District and the work of the staff to kind of go through this in a very thorough way. So I'm in full support. I would have supported with the IRBs. I just think that these instruments, particularly as we go forward into the next five or 10 years, these kinds of things, whether they're STAR or TIF or IRBs, are the levers that might differentiate us from other communities who are struggling to get these businesses. So I'm in support. Thanks.
This issue this evening has to do with the sale of the city parking lot only. We hear a lot of other discussion about a hotel and about all kinds of things, but this is about the sale of the city lot. And I oppose selling the lot for the minimum amount of money, which we were given a range, an estimate of an appraisal, and I want the most we can get for the citizens of this community. I think losing the parking, which is probably the, as the lead item, so here we are with a brand-new vision plan, and first thing we're going to do is sell the, kind of the jewel off the top. And, oh, well, they'll find a place to park. Oh, I would have liked for us to have begun the reconsideration of the parking plan and get it in place before we sell the lot, and just do some things that don't, aren't totally a reaction to the loss of that parking lot. And so I think that the commission's slowness to accept this proposal has resulted in some good things. The compromises have been good for the community. It's a better proposal now than it was, so I want to, there are other things I would say, but it's, I think the parking is a critical need in Aggieville, and I think there's a delicate balance, and I would like for that to be one of the highest considerations we have for the future economy, too, of Aggieville and for the merchants that have to exist there. People have to be able to get to their businesses. So I will vote no. So having said that, are there, is there...
I think your concern on the parking, it's not like immediately going to go away. It's going to take, you know, four or five months for them to develop, and then when they start constructing, it will be temporarily gone, you know, for a while, and then we'll get it back in this parking agreement. So that's why, you know, I can adjust to that. Now, I don't know, you know, the price thing, I hear, you know, we should have gotten more money for it. I don't know. The city staff did the negotiations there, so I have to defer to, you know, their decision on that, because I wasn't out there doing the real estate deal. But yeah, I'd like to see us get more money for it if we can, but I'm not so sure that's possible.
Well...
Yeah. The other thing in terms of the sale of the lot of the land is it's really hard for me to force this back to the drawing board over $50,000 to $100,000 more for the sale of the lot of the land, knowing that this is going to generate millions of dollars in property taxes. It seems like, it just seems like a hard decision for us to make in the short term. It's short-term thinking when we know that we're going to make a significant amount of money off of the property in the long term. And in terms of parking, I totally understand the mayor's comments, because I'm someone who frequents Aggieville, so it's hard for me to find parking as well, and there's probably going to be some short-term pain. But until we make a move like this, there will always be pain with parking in Aggieville. This offers us the forward momentum to do something, to offer a long-term solution to this problem. So I just think it's important that we think about those things as we make this decision.
If there's no other comment, is there a motion?
I move to reapprove the real estate contract in the amount of $800,000 with the Johnson Company of Kansas City, Missouri, for the purchase of the city property in the 1,200 block of Blumenton Avenue and authorize the mayor to execute a contract of sale of real estate.
Second. There's a motion and a second. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
No.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
And Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. And that would be a wrap for this evening. We're adjourned. Thank you.